Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt agenda?
I saw who.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made in seconds, both in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the list is to swear in Sandra. That way it makes teeth here.
Well, she has a paperized.
I.
Sandra Menzel.
Did you write in? Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
In a manner free of all bias.
In a manner free of all bias.
Discharge the duties of town councilor.
Discharge the duties of town councilor.
Of the State of Oregon.
Of the State of Oregon.
Town of Lakeview.
Town of Lakeview.
According to best my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here she is. Oh, the woman might keep that.
Yeah.
Is it my door? She gets one, we get one. Okay, she can sign them both. Come on, here she is. She doesn't even care, huh? Do you want to sit here?
They're going to divide us.
Hey, you can go over there.
It's a segregation thing.
Just jump over the table.
Go there if you'd like. I'm going to show them what we made.
Does that mean you're going to...
I'm just going to come with you.
Okay.
I always come in late anyways. Okay. Consent agenda, motion and action approving consent agenda items.
I would make a motion that we approve it with the addition of a public comment period under guest speaker's communications and informational items.
Uh, may I move that? Hold on a second.
Yeah, a second.
Both in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, guest speakers, communication informational item DOC rate increase.
There's just a letter in there from DOC.
Yeah, I got it.
Increasing their rates when we ask for their services.
So it was just informational item, and so is the PAC PD without the others.
Um, budget hearing. Oh, no, wait, I'm sorry, public comment. Eric, I almost forgot. Sorry, Mike.
No, that's fine. We may not have.
You have any public comment?
Uh, it was my understanding...
Stand and state your name.
Uh, Mike Schultz. It was my understanding this meeting you were going to bring up discussion about if you were going to have a recreational pot or marijuana story here in town. Was that supposed to be on the agenda?
That was on our work session, yes.
At 3:00 PM, we had a work session, yes.
Oh, then the paper got it wrong.
I don't know.
No, that was, the paper said it was 4:00 today, and that was going to be on today's. Well...
So do you have comments?
Yes, I do, matter of fact. As we all know, as it stands right now, it's Schedule I drug. It is against the law, federal law, period, in the story by all its purposes. I know there are numerous states who have voted it in, the people have, but it is against the law. Until such time as we petition or Congress or however the process is to get it changed, I do not think the Lakeview should get involved in the sale marijuana within city limits or any place within the county for that. Just because of the town head does not make it right. Um, I normally, I'm 66 years old. I grew up during the hippie age, whatever you want to call it, back in 60s and 70s. I personally have seen what pot can do. Why do you believe it's a stepstone drug or not? It doesn't matter if you're going to do that. If you believe you have a tendency, you want to do everything, you just don't stop the pot. People do, but I don't think as generally they do. I generally went out of my stake because I've gone long beyond, past that point. I have a grandfather. And bringing that up, I mean, we have no long-term study. There is none concerning the medicinal, or the medical, number one medicinal properties of marijuana. There's a lot of internet hearsay and what have you about it. But there are new studies. Mr. Obama did release some drugs to go to medical hospitals and such for the study of it, but there's nothing hard to pass about it. Maybe be, that maybe year is coming. Again, I do not think for that reason why we should as a town get involved with it. We have drugs, we have laws about alcohol abuse within a family where there's minor children. My understanding, you can't smoke a cigarette in a closed car if you have a minor child in there. What about such safeguards for marijuana? You want to have young adults smoking pot in the house with children around. We have it today. I know pots here. I received, when I was in the Marines, I received many articles from my parents from the Lake County Examiner concerning the number of pot parties that were busted back in the 70s and 80s. Pots here is probably going to be here forever and ever, but in such times, there are some safeguards put around it, some better understanding of it. Again, I do not think that Lakeview should get involved for that reason. I understand there's a, there's a siding problem with it. I don't think any place in Lakeview would be probably, whether it's a thousand feet from the school or anything else. But what all boils down to in my frame of mind is it is against federal law, and in all cases, federal law should be seen state law. We all read about the latest, I guess, the individual that passed through Lakeview recently. He had a couple thousand marijuana in it, in his vehicle. We know about the, I don't know how many towns or how much, but a very large amount of marijuana busted down in Northern California on a drugs reservation. The feds are taking out the big rolls. If you have it here in town, where's it going to come from? Who's going to grow it? I understand you have a personal use law in Oregon where you can grow X number of plants. Uh, whether that's, I guess, I would think that's against the law in Schedule I drugs also. So leave it at that until such point as where it gets clarified on the higher, the government level. I don't think we ought to be, as a town, or a county, should be in the, you know, the selling pot. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have any more public comments? With the budget hearing, approve state revenues. I'm looking here for... I think I have his pen.
We, we have an ultra resolution later on in, you know, under new business, but right now we have to have a public hearing.
Okay, I see it, I see it right there. All right, let's just move on down. We have the final review of the budget. So, any, any old business? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. We have to discuss different ideas. We have state revenue sharing that we get every year, and it can go to the, you know, for different uses, such as we have the highway tax, which automatically goes to the streets. And then we have OLCC tax and cigarette tax, and then the state revenue sharing tax. And we just have to have a public, open meeting to declare that we will accept those.
Accept those?
Yes. And so, and then going from there, then we just have any questions on the final review of the budget that was presented a week ago.
Do you need a motion on the state revenues?
Not until later. We will just adopt it down, under a resolution later on.
Just officially, it is opening as a public hearing.
And we have to sign a, before we get it back to the states, and we will, because this is substantial amount every year.
You should accept it.
So, you were saying... No.
Okay, anybody have any questions on the budget? The old business. About, about the only thing I have on the old business, when I mentioned about the storage buildings on North H between 2nd and 3rd, Darwin and I took a tour through there. Travis was there, we talked to the guy, and the best way to go through that would go through law enforcement to try to get that building signed over to us. Travis is emailing the guy to get all the forms, get the packet that we have to fill out and send back to them. And they say it takes, what, six weeks?
Uh, he said from the time we start this process to completion, will probably take about six months to where we have a deed in our, in our name, and it's town property. And so, going through it with Ray, I think it's a great thing. I think it'll, it'll give us a lot of great storage. I think we can do some different things, like we have a bike cage over at the police department now. We can move items out of that, clean up that area, make it look a little more presentable at the police department and still have a secure area to, you know, store things. We may be able to even move our evidence room out of where it is, have more organization for our evidence room. At that time, we could do a purge, get rid of stuff that we need to get rid of. But I, all the vehicles that we have right now that need to be stripped down and get sold, we could move them over there, get them stored, and have a spot inside to work. But I think it'd be a great thing for the town to have. It's a, it's a great property and would be very useful. Like our, our trailer reader board that we don't use during the winter could be stored in there. Extra fire trucks could be stored in there throughout the winter.
Where is this?
It's on H Street.
North 2nd and North 3rd. Used to be the old Fish and Wildlife.
Two places up the other side of the road. Yeah, on the west side. It's about four or five bays.
Yeah, four that are usable for vehicles and one that basically just storage.
Especially if we can get it for free. Fish and Wildlife wants it gone out of their life.
They want it off there.
And they want it off their books and out of their way and don't want to do maintenance over there anymore. And the government doesn't want to deal with it, so it's highly likely that it will just be deeded to us. And they said law enforcement procurement is the best way. And so, we'll get out letters of interest, emails of interest tomorrow or tonight, and that way we can start that process, then they'll send us a packet that starts the purchase of, the process of purchasing it, purchasing it or having it deeded to us. So he said about six months from start to, we actually own it now.
Thanks, Rose. All right, we'll move down to new business. Order of approving Lake District Hospital Master Plan Development Overlay Zone. Do I hear a motion on that?
This is from a previous hearing that we discussed and agreed upon, represented from the hospital here, went through all the planning steps. Mayor make the motion to approve this order in the matter of the approval of the master plan development overlay zone.
I'll second that.
Both in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Next one is ordinance 857, approving Pacific Court franchise agreement. 14 pages of it. Do I hear a motion on that?
I would make a motion that we approve the ordinance number...
857?
857. By title only. By reading title only.
Second. Motion been made in seconds, both in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll go down to resolution 905.
I would, I would move further that we adopt the ordinance granting an electric utility franchise to Pacific Court, providing the terms and conditions thereof, and repealing ordinance number 826 in its entirety and declaring an emergency. That's my motion.
I'll second that and just have a question of staff. Lead of council look this over and comfortable with it.
And the only things that we did was we increased the franchise fee to the 7%.
What was it, 3% or 4%?
Uh, I don't...
3% or 5%?
Yeah, it's been working on this for a while, so I, I know it was a 3%.
So it's gone up then, yeah.
And then we just put it at as a 10-year extension instead of, you know, they'd like to put 20, but I'm like, nah.
I'd, I'd like to say I'm glad to see the rate go up, but once again, I will speak for the aesthetics of our community in the next 10 years. I know I probably won't be sitting here, but I would hope that the council at that time would see to it that any new lines or service lines that come into our community are underground. And I, I think that's almost fair for us to ask that of Pacific Court and any community that wants beauty in their community should be doing so.
I agree with you on that with the underground.
So nice and dry down the main street and outside there.
The butcher trees and it's too much of a time. Anyways, I put my comments on that. I made a motion.
Okay, motion been made and approved to, and seconded to approve ordinance number 857. Both in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution 905, approving 2016 to 2017 budget appropriations.
Any further comments from you or finance manager John up?
Well, I was trying to make sure we weren't over mine items, so. As close as we could, but what we had in our contingencies and different funds, but yeah.
Okay, it's resolution number...
905.
905.
905. Do I hear a motion in, in the matter of making budget appropriations for fiscal year 16, 17, resolution 905, resolution? Ooh, I can't even talk.
So, just from staff, this total ends up being $54,000 and change. Obviously, it goes to a few different departments. You know, it's, it's stuff that are not anticipated, but, but stuff that certainly, you know, looks like will need to be expenditures that we made. Just wondering, um, any other clarification or something discussion on this? I mean, it's 54,000, the majority of which comes from contingencies. Kind of a lot of money when we continue to deplete contingency.
It's left about.
Yeah, so.
And the general fund.
I'm just not... When we went through the budget process, we, you know, we tried to scrape as much as we can, or what we can, and to now add this back in as expenses when, you know, we didn't really discuss them in great length, I mean, $54,000 is, you know, a pretty good chunk of change.
Well, it is, and part of that was vacation payout. That's $16,000 between prior manager and prior employee in the general fund. There's a substantial amount that was paid out that was unanticipated for the month. We paid out, um, and then, just trying to figure out quick, but... And then overtime, and ask why we addressed it in the budget this year, that we would have a part-time dispatcher position to either, instead of using somebody that's getting overtime at, you know, base rates 22, $25 an hour. That adds up really quick, so we're trying to change that.
So does this ultimately result in, you know, 0.5 FTE or FTE, 4FTE?
It's not a full FTE, but it's going to help a lot by having that part-time position. We do have somebody that is hired, just as a fill-in, and that should fill in the, the high overtime, because it's every year, it's every single year.
Our overtime is just incredible to get for people who are dying marijuana.
And yet, it was previously budgeted, and this is an amendment to what we adopted, is why I'm saying... I just have a little bit of a hard time saying we're going to spend another $54,000 creating another position where we've previously had all the labors at least accounted for and budgeted for. Soon our contingency won't be there anymore, is what I'm saying.
No, we do have a contingency for next year, but the one for this year will be depleted.
It's certainly gone. And we talked in our last meeting about trying to, you know, relate some debt.
Yeah. Well, and, and I've talked to both the managers about the fact that they are going to have to start approving these overtime expenditures, because the staff has been able to do whatever they wanted to do over there. And a couple of them help the system really, really well. They end up, last pay period, I think we're at 41 hours again on overtime for fire and dispatch. And when you have no monitoring of what is going on, that's going to happen. So it's just a matter of saying, you know, of course, if they're sick, you know, vacations have to be covered, but that's where our new guard fall in. And one of our dispatchers that's the highest paid, he actually said, "I am not going to sign up for that. I'll be the last person to go get caught." Just trying to help the town, which is good. And I admire him for saying that. But, so out of the general fund, it was the $44,676, which totally depletes the contingency fund, but covers those expenditures. And then we did receive the additional revenues from the police department of that $9,006.429. So that's an in addition, so he's covered on his line items that were over a spin. So that's what we did there, so, yeah. And then just very little from the 911 budget. They only had, you know, very small compartments, $5,000, so that's all I could put back into their line items, but it's better than nothing. And same with the street fund, the medical and the weekend shift was higher than anticipated in last year.
Does this budget include 901 or 905?
No, I'll have to include that in there, so.
No way.
I have not done that yet, so.
This takes care of that, and you have a plan in place so that we're not looking at those out overtime, excessive overtime dollars.
That placed under legislature scrutiny.
Yeah, yeah. So, trying. But it's just, you're going to clean up. It's basically what this resolution covers.
So we start all over in the first.
Yeah.
I would move that we adopt resolution number 905 in the matter of making a budget appropriation for fiscal year 2016, 2017 as presented.
And it should be 17, 18.
Yeah, that's what I...
Well, I'll suck it with the...
Sorry.
The change. 2017, 18.
I had it on the other one.
So it's 2017, 2018?
No.
Well, that's four this year. It's four of the current year.
Right.
Okay, so sorry about that, but there is a typo at least on the...
On the one, so just delete seven.
Okay, that makes more sense, sorry about that.
We have a person to second.
All seconded or...
Yeah, note in favor?
Aye.
905. Okay, next one's 90, resolution 906, approving state revenues.
One we discussed at the first of the meeting.
Yes.
Resolution 906?
Yeah.
I would move that we adopt resolution number 906 in the matter of receiving state revenues for the 2017, 2018 fiscal year.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, both in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 907, adopting 2017, 18 budget-making appropriations, imposing and categorizing taxes.
And this was the budget that was presented at the last council meeting, and I believe to amend it to include these changes that were just approved by the resolution.
The appropriation.
So other than that, it will be...
With amendment of appropriations discussed earlier and approved, I would move we adopt resolution number 907 in the matter of adopting the annual operating budget for the town of Lakeview for fiscal year 2017, 2018, making appropriations, imposing and categorizing taxes and levying taxes.
Motion's made and seconded, both in favor?
Aye.
Budget?
I just say...
This is just stuff from, you know, the LSC conference and bulletin stuff.
Yeah.
But that?
No, you're good.
In regards to the conference, I, I would put my name in the hat. I would like to attend the conference.
That's what I need.
I think they're very valuable, and so I just would put my name in the hat of the town.
No, that's what I need, is do hold, like, the issue is 28th and 29th.
Of September?
So, Mike? Darwin, are you going to sign this up?
I've never, I don't think I've been before. I wonder if it's...
Let me, let me do some checking.
Do you want me to sign you up?
Yeah. I've got the mayor's conference coming up next month.
Are you excited to go?
I'm going to be in Budapest, sorry.
You're retired.
I've seen your years passing at the yellows. You've been very active in the department, the different of its own play, so.
It's, it's informative, you know, there's a lot of, and it's a good networking thing. I think that's your most important piece of it, too, and in those colleagues, you know...
I've had discrepancies with the major board, too, as you know. Still, I think they're a good organization.
Well, I think that's why you need to go. I really do. I think when you're, when you find faults in the law, you need to clear, end up their act, and so I think, I think it's more than going through the...
Okay, well, we'll get you signed up.
Anything else?
I just wanted to make a comment, if that's okay. It's not an agenda item, but it's a, we've had a little bit of a rough start with our pool this year, and I wanted to just clarify it with the council, because when we interviewed prior lifeguards, they helped us set rules because of the concerns that they had had in the past. And so, we did set some rules, and then we've gotten a lot of opposition. But during life, during lessons, we made it now so that we can't be apparent inside behind you, because they say that it interferes with the instruction. We tried to get an instructor this year to come in and instruct the teenagers, which I hope we can find for next year, because they really aren't teaching the kids, you know, they teach them what the noodles or what the life vests and stuff, but they need it. But we're kind of trying to work at that. But I just wanted to bring that up, that it has been kind of a rough start. We have a new crew, we have buy managers, co-managers. One is Jolie Kern from the school, and Nathan Scott, who's been doing a really super good job. But between trying to make it open for, I was going to say, trying to make it, you know, open for all of these different things, we've come in with quite a few obstacles, and I hope it's going smoother now, but I wanted to hear feedback. The only feedback I've heard now is just on the TV thing, you know, but I think we've got some of that, but I just wanted to make it sound a little where that they're at.
got some of that, but I just wanted to make that aware that their guys needs to pick up some laundry, you know.
I mean, the opposition, is that just written up from our employees? It's more so from...
It's the public who, who wants access to inside.
The inside of the pool, well, unless you're...
And there is no way to avoid, I mean, it's nice and all that, but there's no way to avoid overcrowding necessary areas for parole, you know, when they're doing their perimeter checks and stuff like that. I will tell you that the crowd, the crowd across the street from me at the, at the kiddie park has been immense.
Really?
No parking available anywhere within, you know, all around the blocks, they're really over there. What I'm wondering is, is if that kind of an impact, I will walk over there tomorrow and double check, but I'm wondering, what's, what's the thirty people, one lifeguard at the big pool?
It's actually forty.
Whatever that is.
That's a lot.
And I know ours is smaller and I know that it's a different thing, but I'm wondering if, if we're going to have to on some days, maybe back up another person coming in.
I was there at lunch today, Darwin was there as well. There was probably no more than...
Yesterday, like...
Yesterday, my wife said yesterday was a lot busier. There was no more than eight kids in the pool at any given time today. There was two lifeguards there. I don't know if it was because of a shift change or just hanging out or what it was, but they were, there were two lifeguards there today, at least for a while. But, and my wife said today was a lot calmer than yesterday.
Recommended.
And I got to give kudos for the lifeguards this year. I went for the openings one day. They were on top of stuff, they were paying attention, they were more attentive than they have been ever. And so, the kids this year are really doing a good job. I think the management is, is responsible for that. The kids are doing better than I've seen them do in the past, so I'm, I'm pretty impressed with what I've seen so far.
Show unwresped.
Yeah, because, because with the count, you have to consider every person that goes through the gate as a count. So, you know, if we're at a limit...
Even if they're not swimming, or they're in the...
Right, they're in there, so you have to consider them as a count. We got a flipper this year, but I just wanted to make you guys aware that we're trying to work with everything, get all the bugs out, but, you know, it's just...
Is that the same for the kiddie pool?
No.
Okay.
Clipper recommendation in regards to the kiddie pool, maybe next year, if we could paint a terracotta, our rest color. No further comment.
So, I've had a few days to, to let this all kind of go away from opening day. So, we, we cleaned out some bugs, but what I want to say as a parent, if we've, you know, our lifeguards are according to the need of how many people come through the doors, when we've got parents coming in, whether they're swimming or not, you know, if they've got a swim pass, I don't see how we can turn them away, whether they're going to be swimming or not.
No, and that was...
And that's one of the clarifications that's, that's being made. We should be considering those parents as being responsible enough to keep their eye on their kids and that way, helping the situation.
And that was a big center standing, and we got that clarified the first day, first morning.
I wish I thought that were true, that the parents who are there watching their children are responsible for that child. I have seen it over at the kiddie park and up there, where as soon as there's a lifeguard or somebody in charge, I'm going to turn my back, I'm going to visit with my friend and I'm not going to know what's going on. Now, yes, there are responsible parents, I agree, but you can't depend on that and say, oh, well, I thought you were watching your little boy while he was putting your other one's head under the water.
You know, lifeguards, yeah, is what you mean by that. I mean, you know, lifeguards still have their responsibility to do, but what I'm saying is that they can't see everything. And if, you know, if they were looking down at the kiddie pool and not walking the platform, they would see it happen, you know, but opening day was crazy and, and every day is crazy. Now, a little kid going under and taking a couple swallows is a big deal.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and response time is a serious deal. And two or three times soaking up a little bit of water, you're going to end up pretty quick with a, a sick kid and dry drowning and all these kind of things happen. And I just tell you that, that, you know, we better get the kinks out, we better figure out this pool, because it's soaking up a lot of money. And when I first counted the days from day opened to day closed, there were sixty-eight days, and that wasn't including days that were going to be closed for maintenance or, you know, swim, you know, meat that's happening this weekend. You know, to be open roughly sixty days and it's costing us forty-plus thousand a year. Beyond that, actually, it's more like sixty thousand a year and then we get a little bit of revenue. But we got to figure this out, because, you know, just not managing an asset correctly, because it should be making money and it's not, has been for a long time.
Last year, when I was up there, there was only two lifeguards on, they're both in the middle, and there was nobody watching the kiddie pool. Were there kids in that pool?
In that small, and at the other...
Yeah.
Well, I think, you know, some of those bugs are, you know, we've addressed them and I, you know, I think it's really good. We still every day add a little bit of something that we're trying to do and we have more management going up and walking around or, or more parents that we know up there checking or, you know, that type of thing. But just, you know, we want to approve it and I know that we've improved it like a whole bunch since the last couple of years, but there's still room and, and it may be that we really need to sit down as a council, a county manager to say, give committee, give something, what do we want out of this pool? What, how can we enhance it, you know, what, what can we do? Because it is a huge investment that we pay, I mean, we're, we're supplementing it by a lot of money every year, so we need to figure it out.
Brings a lot of smiles, but it does cost a lot.
Anyway, I just wanted to share that a little bit, so.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Okay, we'll adjourn the meeting at four forty-three. Sorry, Mike, I sometimes jump ahead and step.
Oh, that's...